Why is there so much disturbance?
Who's rustling papers?
Good evening. I call this June 22, 2020, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and public gatherings of less than 10 people indoors, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. There are three council members present tonight in council chambers and four participating virtually from home to ensure that proper distancing and room capacity directives are followed. All council members will be able to fully participate in this evening's work. Council chambers have been thoroughly cleaned prior to use this evening. All staff and elected officials present have access to a variety of PPE and hand sanitizer stationed at multiple locations throughout Town Hall. This meeting is being streamed simultaneously on both the Town of Morrisville Facebook page and the Town of Morrisville website. On June 25, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future Town Council meetings or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. Eric Smith, Town Clerk, will conduct a roll call of council members. Present.
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 Thank you, sir. Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and a second to invoke Rule 19.
I move that we invoke Rule 19.
Councilmember Robati has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate our roll call vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Rossum-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye. Thank you, sir. We are now at Item 4, Discussion Items. There are two discussion items on tonight's agenda: a Town Council Roundtable and a CIP Policy Development Discussion. We will begin with Roundtable Items. Staff has one which will be discussed at the end. Our general practice is for each council member to have an opportunity to present an item briefly and for the group to provide direction to staff to either prepare a briefing item, do some investigation for report back, or to postpone any action on the item for the time being. Who would like to present their item first? Seeing none, I can get us started if that's okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so what I would like to discuss is face coverings. As we know, there's been two municipalities within Wake County, Raleigh and Knightdale, who have implemented this. And when I see someone with a face covering, I think they're informed, educated, and responsible. They're a person who cares and is considerate of other people's welfare. So all levels of government have indicated in their guidelines that the efficacy and support for people to wear face coverings. Per the federal CDC website, how to protect yourself and others, everyone should cover your mouth and nose with a cloth face cover when around others. You could spread COVID-19 to others even if you do not feel sick. Everyone should wear a face cloth cover when they have to go out in public, for example, to the grocery store or to pick up other necessities. Cloth face coverings should not be placed on young children underage two, anyone who has trouble breathing, or is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance. The cloth face cover is meant to protect other people in case you are infected. Do not use a face mask meant for a healthcare worker. Continue to keep about six feet between yourself and others. The cloth face cover is not a substitute for social distancing. So all of that is from the federal CDC website. Per the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, they say if you leave home, practice your Ws: Wear, Wait, and Wash. Wear a cloth face covering if you will be with other people. These actions can protect our families and neighbors as the state takes a cautious step forward to ease restrictions while the virus is still circulating. And Wake County echoes the state guidance. If you do leave home, practice your Ws: Wear, Wait, Wash. Wear a cloth face covering if you will be with other people. So I've reached out to some of our business community, and the leadership of the Target in Park West and of the Harris Teeter at McCrimmon Corners told me that they are okay with mandating face coverings for their customers, while already required for their staff. In fact, one said their customers are asking them to do so, and the other said it would be a great idea to mandate. They each noted their other stores in Raleigh and Durham are already under the mandate and are not experiencing any problems. So despite some concerns which we have heard via email, I believe it is important for us to continue to do everything we can to protect the health and welfare of everyone in or who visits us in Morrisville. There is no downside to helping people be safe. I've spoken to both Mayor Baldwin and Mayor Roberson, and they feel good about the decision to mandate face coverings in their municipalities. I know that we will feel good about being on the right side of history when we look back upon this time and know that our decisions save lives. I know this is a weighty subject, and I look forward to hearing the thoughts of my colleagues. Would anyone like to share their thoughts? I recognize Councilmember Robati.
So, as you know, we received a lot of public comment on this subject. I have to say that the people that were in favor of mandating face masks just ratioed the people that were not in favor. It was disturbing to me to see the number of people that characterized the face mask question as one of personal liberty. You know, because there were people that had legitimate reasons not to want to, not to wear a face mask. People spoke about health concerns. People spoke about health concerns of their children. One, I remember one woman specifically said that her son had asthma. Please don't require him to wear a face mask. But by and large, it seemed like the people that are anti-face mask, are anti-face mask on, as a question of personal liberty. And, you know, I, I have to say that even though one of those on the against side was Chuck Robati of 110 Rock River Road, Morrisville, I have to say that I don't understand that characterization. I, you know, I think that this is nothing more or less than a public health question. And we know that an asymptomatic person who coughs or sneezes can take, can eject virus-laden droplets onto surfaces, onto other people, and get them sick. So, you know, I did, I did try to respond to as many people as possible that were, that were against it. But, yeah, I, it's not that I don't take that concern seriously, but I fundamentally object to the characterization of this issue as one of personal liberty. I see it solely as an issue of public health. That's what I have.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you. I told the mayor this, but I couldn't find the data that I was looking for. But I did research Sanjay Gupta from CNN, who's gone on repeatedly to reveal the data that does show that wearing a mask is much more effective in preventing spread than not wearing one, particularly those who either are carrying the virus or are carrying the symptoms and don't know it. So the numbers that I heard from him last week on CNN were that if you wear a mask, the chance of spreading the virus if you have it's around 4%. But if you weren't wearing a mask, it goes up to 17%. So I'm still going to try to find that data. But, so from a public health perspective, I do think that wearing a mask would be a good thing for us to look at. I guess the thing I would be curious about is, I think it's a mix of mandating a mask, the types of, you know, what would be the exceptions? I mean, in terms of like, like, I run a lot. I couldn't run with a mask. I couldn't play tennis with a mask. You know, I mean, parks, some people I see, people in the parks wearing a mask, some not. So that would be one question. I would look at it, like, central businesses. So anywhere where lots of people are going to shop, in a shopping center or grocery store, maybe restaurants, because the waiters are already wearing them, would we want to, like, not require it? So I guess I would want to know what staff could come back with and what are the options of having a mandatory mask requirement? Because if we do something general, it's just so broad. What would it cover? What would it not cover? Completely, the second component of that is, well, there's two more components, enforceability. Because one concern I have is, like, in the paper today, it said that in Raleigh, I heard Mayor Baldwin on the news, it said that people were still not wearing masks because there's no enforceability. So, you know, unlike Montgomery, Alabama, where there's an actual fee or fine. So how would we enforce it? What would it be, like, could we have, like, an educational campaign? Could we get creative and innovative with our PIO and our William, Will Glenn in terms of just, you know, making it sort of fun, of showing and educating? Because I think we have a chance as a council to encourage behavior wearing masks, which I think it is a public health issue for me. I've spoken to other healthcare providers, including my wife, who's a frontline worker pediatrician, who says absolutely that masks are required. So that, those are really my thoughts. I just think it's trying to figure out how we drive the discussion and how we, how we deal with enforceability as well. Because, I mean, the final thing is, the governor is expected to announce by June 26 his reopening plans, whether it's going to be Phase 2.5 or Phase 3. And if Governor Cooper were to come, and this might be a question for Frank, if the governor were to come out this week and say, you know, "We're going to require face masks for essential businesses", then what would that do with our efforts? I mean, I guess we could do our own, and it would just be reinforcing that. But I wouldn't want to confuse people if, you know. So anyway, those are my thoughts. I don't know. We'll know more in a few days.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please. I mean, yeah, Scruggins-Johnson, and then Mayor Protam-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have gathered a few notes. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who sent an email, called, or commented on Facebook, or any of the other social media platforms about this issue as it relates to Morrisville. It's very complicated. There's a lot of passion out there. And there are many, many, many different sources that people have shared with us. And it's an incredible amount of information that we have at our fingertips. Not every source is equally weighted. Some are more scientific-based, some are more of a composite nature where they summarize based another study. So there's just a lot of information, and interpretation is everything. And what I think I take away from some article is different than what someone else may take away from an article. So we have many different perspectives. It is disappointing to me that the mayors could not agree on a single approach as to how the mask-wearing in our county could be performed safely and with consistency. What we are left with today is a fragmented approach to how masks are treated in Wake County. Potentially, we could have 12 different policies. And as a resident of the county and as someone that does business in the county, I don't always pay attention to whether I'm going to a store in Apex, Cary, Morrisville. Sometimes the borders are confusing. So if, if we had different policies in different locations, it, it might not turn out the way we want. So that's my frustration personally, is, is concern that we could potentially be creating more of a confusion than having direction from the state level or another area. But let's focus on Morrisville. First of all, I counted all the emails. I responded to all the emails up until, like, today. Today, I wasn't as stellar at responding because it was getting late in the day. But I will be responding to the ones I haven't had a chance to. There are over 150 emails that were in support that we received and 28 that were not in support. But most importantly, not everybody in our town was aware that this issue was going to be discussed today. So we had a subset of people from our town that weighed in very strongly. So it's a very strong response. But we didn't officially have a survey that was put out for the folks in Morrisville. But yet, we did receive such a significant response. It's very impressive. Science was cited several times. People were citing personal liberties, like Councilmember Robati mentioned. And I would like to say that there are many different varieties of what people interpret as pro-mask. Because some people said they only want masks inside in a certain condition, and they wanted no masks outside. Some people said they want to wear masks anytime they're in public. So there's a lot of variation between support and not support. So people said they never wear a mask. So we have a lot of shades of gray. One of the questions I've been asked in IASK of my council is what truly is our jurisdiction? What can we influence? What can we mandate? What can we recommend? What are we assuming? I would assume that we could feasibly require the town facilities and the town activities to wear masks. Because that is truly, we have control. But can we control private businesses? Can we control other spaces within the town? And appropriately do that? I am not clear at this time. There are businesses that wonder, who's going to pay for the masks if the town mandates them? How is that going to affect me? How, I know of several small businesses where they are incorporating PPE into their regular routine. But then if a person does not wear a mask and that is their policy, then they ask for that person to purchase a mask. Sometimes they offer them for free. So there is, there is a public health concern, but yet there's associated costs that need to be clearly defined. What's, in relation to businesses, who mandates? I think businesses can have their own company policy, and they can require masks for service. They could request masks for service, or they don't need to have a policy at all. So there's, there's like, who creates these policies? Who manages these policies? I need to see that tonight, where we stand on how that jurisdiction works. There was a statement this evening by the mayor that says he believes that people that are not wearing face coverings are uneducated, because he said people are educated that are wearing masks. And I would, I don't feel that way. I feel that people that are not wearing masks might have a personal medical reason for not wearing a mask. They might be fearful of not wearing a mask. They might not be aware of the true benefits of not wearing a mask. So I'm going to assume good intent. I'm going to assume they're educated. I'm going to assume that they're trying to be safe like everybody else. But I, I would like to help and, and help them understand that masks do help, that they slow the rate of our spread across our area, and they do help people interact in a more normal way. Otherwise, we'd have to stay six feet, six feet apart for quite some time. I have more comments later, but I just wanted to kind of lay out where we are and what, what we're facing, and how passionate our people in our town are about this issue. So I thank you.
Thank you. And remember, we're trying to decide whether or not we want to direct staff to bring us back more information. So Mayor Protam-Johnson, please.
So I'll, I'll kind of start where Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson ended about the passion that we hear and that we feel from the residents that are sharing their input and their feedback with us. This is absolutely a passionate topic, and people feel strongly one way or the other. I too, I did not, as Vicky did, and thank you for doing that, Vicky, I did not go out and count the number of emails that were in favor or against. So I appreciate that, that, that data point. But, but to your point, we did not even ask for input on this issue. This is the first time council is even having this discussion. So that we got, the fact that we got so much input leads me to believe that after tonight, we will again receive some more input, which is surely welcomed. I do want to thank all the residents that have weighed in. And I, I have some notes here, too. But I, and I'll try not to repeat everything that Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson laid out, because she did an excellent job. But there was a diverse, across a diverse spectrum of information that we received, from outright no to no but maybe to yes, all the way to yes but with exceptions. And so there's, there's, there's a lot of information there to try to cipher through. Yes, we want face coverings, but not while I'm running. I'm a runner, and I don't want to have to be mandated that I wear a mask. Yes, mandate face coverings, but I don't, I don't want my children to have to wear them. So there are all kinds of exemptions that people are also asking for. Not everyone, some were very clear, just said, "We want face coverings mandated, period." I, I do believe, and we've heard this from others, that this is a public health issue first. I think we probably can all agree on that. But I think it's really important to remember that while a face covering is, has great value, and I believe it has great value, I wear one when I go out. And the only place I typically go anymore is to the grocery store. I do believe in the value of face coverings, but I think it's really important to remember that from the CDC guidelines to the state guidelines to even the, the different entities here locally that have mandated face coverings, whether that be Durham County, Orange County, the city of Raleigh, Knightdale, they all say face coverings are not a substitute for social distancing. The six feet is critically important. And when you cannot maintain a six-foot distance, then face coverings are equally as important. So I, I, I think these messages are really important that we, as leaders in the community, need to make sure that we're sharing with everyone. There are a couple of things that concern me with doing a mandate. And I think if you talk to some, some of the other communities, you will hear that enforcement is number one. Nobody is enforcing a mandate on a face covering. Without enforcement, then it's, it's really a symbolic gesture only. And, and while that's, that's okay, that's okay. I think what, not that I think, what, what I would rather concentrate on is how to make significant and real change and meaningful change in behavior that, that helps as we go through what is going to be months and months and months. This is not a situation that is short-term. This is a long-term situation until there's either a vaccine or some kind of treatment option. So as unfortunate as it is, it's a very divisive issue, too. And why it is so divisive, I, I don't understand. But I think to outright mandate does not help with the whole divisiveness of the, of the issue. And, and to outright mandate is not in itself going to make real, meaningful change in behavior. So I, I think enforcement is a deep concern to me. Once you put a mandate out there, I think you need to enforce it. And I don't know how you do that. And if you're going to do as others, require a mandate and then not follow through with enforcement, I think we, we bring up a whole, a whole host of issues. So enforcement is a concern. Consistency, and we've heard that, too. There, you know, we have different communities are going to come up with their own plans. The borders around here are so fluid and so irreg, not fluid, but, not fluid, that's the wrong word, but so irregular that I think consistency is going to be a, a, a problem. And then, of course, all the exemptions that everybody's asking for. How do we handle that? And then, and that leads right back to enforcement, then. If you have exemptions, how does the public know that you're one of those people that falls under the exemption? So I, I see a host of, of issues. What, what I would really rather concentrate on is what we can do. You know, we can state that we highly, highly recommend face coverings in public, especially when social distancing is not possible. I think we talked to our chamber, they have, the chamber has two events coming up this week and next week, where, with their, with the business community. I think we engage with the chamber and the business community. I think we, as a town, can, can work on a thorough communications plan. And in that plan, I think highlight the businesses that are doing the right thing. And, and quite frankly, Mayor, I would ask, while you were talking to Harris Teeter and Target, why didn't you ask them why they're not requiring their customers to wear face masks? They can do that today if they want. They can do that today. I will tell you if, if, I haven't been in a Target since the pandemic started. I have no desire to go into a Target. I have no desire to go into any retail store, quite frankly. If they required face masks of all customers, that might change my mind. I have no desire, the only, the only place I'll go anymore is Town Hall or, or I go to Food Lion. I'm going to give a shout-out to Food Lion at Davis Drive and Morrisville Carpenter Road. They do a fantastic job. So I think we highlight the businesses that are doing a fantastic job. And, and I think we use our citizens, the ones that communicated with us, that are deeply concerned. I think we use them to help with the message. We've got a lot of professionals here in the community that have shared really good information with us. I, I think we use them to help, and then we use other folks to help to say, "This is why I'm wearing a face mask for you, because you're a member of my community." I, you know, I think there's, I think there's a lot we can do to make real, meaningful changes in behavior. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you for those thoughts. Councilmember Garamella, and then Councilmember Fender, please.
I think I agree with Liz and Vicky and all those 175 emails that we got, because personally, I have learned a lot from the emails because people have come from both sides of the aisle and including some in the same family. So, which was, you know, you can't have one answer for everything. But I, we, we are not debating here the point that mask is not helpful. You know, we all know the CDC guidelines and the CDC, you know, has shown that it is very helpful. But what we are, I'm trying to understand, in fact, over the weekend, I talked to four other physicians, and they all said, you know, the masks are required. And one of them was pretty adamant, and she told me was, "If the entire US wears masks for two weeks, you know, we can completely get this COVID out." You know, which kind of makes sense. But the thing for us, you know, like, but we are Morrisville. We are not Raleigh. We are not Durham. You know, we don't have malls. We don't have hospitals. We don't have bars. You know, like, even the good bar which we had, like, the trolley is shut down. So for, for me, it is like, do we have an issue in our town? You know, is our police getting complaints? Are they, you know, seeing huge crowds who are not maintaining social distancing and not wearing masks? Because that's how it triggered Raleigh, you know, with Glenwood. That, that was the trigger point where the, they quickly said, "We had to have a mask." And yesterday, we had a WRL article that said, even if this- And yesterday, we had a WRL article that said, even despite having, you know, the mandatory mask, they were not following at the same bars that they were. So we got to understand, you know, what we need from our town staff and also from our, you know, like from the people. Because people in Mooresville are very, very educated and they are very, you know, to be honest, I feel comfortable, I go out, everyone is careful, everyone is following, you know, the social distancing. So where do we have a mask? It should be our question, you know, or around those areas, you know? Because I agree, like my neighbor, I said, and she told me straight, "I walk my dogs and on the sidewalk where no one is there, I don't want to have a mask." So others go for a walk, they don't want. And one of the physicians said that the biggest people who can spread is, are the runners because when they run, it goes almost up to 30 feet that, you know, the droplets carry. So, you know, how do we work these things out? And that is what I am looking for. And to make it something which is agreeable to many people and which makes logical sense, like the rally had a rule, like you need masks on the sidewalks and parking lots. Do we really need that? You know, because are we having crowded, are they crowded? So those are the things. And in fact, I reached out to Durham, DeDriana Freeman, and I said, "What did you guys do?" They followed the Conti guidelines and Conti pretty much did all the heavy lifting, working and talking to the businesses and other people. So I want to see what our Mooresville Chamber is doing and also what Durham Conti has worked, you know, by just saying that we will leave it to the towns to enforce. But have they done any legwork? How are the businesses reacting to it? So for me, it is a point of how do we make this something that can work? You know, and I like what Liz said. We can, we can ask the people in grocery stores or essential services that they could mandate a mask. You know, if Harris Theatre is not putting it, if it is one in Mooresville and we say, "You got to have it," I like what Costco did, because Costco, everyone has to have a mask. So why, and why can't that be done here? You know, if at all. So the whole problem is with people inside in closed container, closed containment is where the issue is. Outdoor, it is different. So if we are working on any, you know, mandate, so let's work it which everyone is ready to agree on and not say like, you know, as Ann was saying, my civil liberties and all those things. So for me, I want to hear from the staff and also, you know, the enforcement, how we can work around those areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. When this issue first came up last week, I really did not know exactly where I fell on whether to mandate or not. So I did go out on social media and solicit feedback from our neighborhood's Facebook page and on Mooresville Moms. And we did get roughly 170-some emails. And I have to say, I had no idea how, what the feedback, how the feedback would come And so I was a bit, I was surprised, maybe that's my own being naive, but I was surprised that the overwhelming response from our residents was in favor of mandating masks. I get that, you know, there should be exceptions or there could be exceptions. We don't need to mandate for sidewalks or being outdoors or necessarily running or for your kids that have asthma and all of that. And so I think if we pursued this, we could come up with a viable solution. I mean, Raleigh hasn't bulleted out on their proclamation, these are the exceptions. Children under 12, people with religious beliefs. You know, to say that, oh, we don't know whether it's, what's going to be an exception or what's not as a means or reason to just not do anything, to me, that's just not acceptable when our residents have overwhelmingly communicated to us that they want mandated mask requirements within Mooresville. And for the people that are against being told what to do, I get it. I don't like being told what to do at all. You know, I remember I got my driver's license, right when I got my driver's license was at the same time, within a couple of months, when North Carolina was first implementing the seatbelt law. And there for a while, for about a month, I thought I was going to be cool and I thought, "Well, the government's not going to tell me what to do." And I drove my little MGB convertible around without a seatbelt on, which was pure stupidity. You know, I was rebelling against the government. I don't like being told what to do. Certainly don't like the government telling me what I cannot and cannot do with my body. However, we, you know, we heard from multiple physicians, multiple health workers and nurses in our community. And, you know, I would not be pushing this so, you know, I wouldn't be pushing this in favor so determinedly if the support hadn't been so overwhelmingly in favor of the masks. So, I mean, you know, the, I get that, you know, we're not Raleigh. We don't have a bunch of 20-some-year-olds out clubbing out on the sidewalk of Glenwood South. And no, they don't know exactly how they're going to enforce it yet. But we could do, still do the right thing and be a leader in bringing this forward simply because it's, one, it's the right thing to do from a health perspective, and two, the majority of our residents, a large majority of our residents are in favor. And, you know, regardless of my personal opinion, I, you know, represent the citizens of Mooresville and all the feed, well, the feedback is showing us that they are overwhelmingly in favor of requiring masks. You know, ideally, I would love for us not to have to do this at all. Ideally, I think everyone should just be out there wearing a mask regardless and everyone decides on theirself, by themselves, that it's the most considerate thing to do and everyone wear a mask. But some people are like me, when I refuse to wear a seatbelt just out to make a point, are, you know, not wearing a mask to make a point. And for the greater good of our community, I think, I believe the direction we need to go is to mandate masks in our, in public spaces, not outdoors. You know, I think we can figure out a viable solution. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for sharing their thoughts on that. Sounds like we have at least five who are interested in having more information brought back. So is there anything that staff needs? Any questions in order to bring something back for us to take a look at? Looking at town manager or assistant town manager? If you have any questions, you got lots of feedback about maybe not on sidewalks, not when people are exercising, exceptions for health.
So you're asking us then, Mayor, to bring back a document that would require masks but with identified exceptions? Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe that was, well, want you to tell us what it could look like. I heard concerns about enforcement. And maybe based loosely on Raleigh, but we were different than Raleigh. Okay, sounds like there's some more comments. Remember, the brief, the roundtable purpose is not to go into deep discussion, it's to determine whether or not there's support for getting more information back. And I heard at least five people say they want more information. But let's hear from Councilmember Robati and then I think that there's some virtual people want to weigh in again.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, you know, what Councilmember Fender was saying really resonated with me about not wearing a seatbelt. And I think that there's, I do think that there's a difference between being, not wanting to be told what to do and a real concern that a civil liberty is being chipped away at. And I don't, I don't think that. But it's not really all about what I think. So I was wondering if we could put some language around the recommendation or the mandate, whatever it turns out to be, that would stipulate that it's for a finite period of time. When CDC relaxes their mask thing, we, you know, we relax ours too. Or the state, or when we get to phase three, or, you know, whatever makes sense to make the measure temporary. And I think that we should, I really do think that we should avoid, I think we should avoid enforcement because I just think it's impossible. But I also think we should avoid enforcement because I can see the side of a person who thinks that, that an enforced mandate of that type is, is an overreach. So I, and I loved what Liz said about the education campaigns. That's all I have.
Okay, yeah. For the education, it doesn't have to be either or. And for what Satish is saying, he would love for Target and Harris Theatre and all the stores to go ahead and do it. And if we want to really change behavior, the mandate in Raleigh, the mandate in Durham, actually now those stores are doing it in those places. So if we're looking to change behavior, the mandate seems to be making that happen for the business community in those towns and cities. I believe there were a couple of people virtual, if you could tell me which order? Mayor Pretend Johnson, then Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, and then Councilmember Ralph, please.
Okay, so I, thank you. I will tell you, I did not hear a majority say they want staff to come back with a resolution that would mandate face coverings. I did not hear that. So I'd like others to speak up. I'll tell you what I did hear. I heard a lot, I heard every single one of us talk about this as being a health issue and that we'd like to help the community, maybe, I'm trying to think of the right wording, help the community understand that it's a health issue and how they, how each one of them, how each one of our citizens, every member of our community can actually play a very important part in this health issue that we are all facing and that we all together need to come together to find a solution. So having said all that, and again, somebody else tell me if I'm way off base. I think what I'm hearing is that we all want to see change happen. The solution would be a mandated face covering resolution. I'm not hearing consensus for that. Maybe what we ask our staff is to look at what is possible, since we've all laid out all our concerns, what is possible for a viable solution to help our community move forward during this pandemic? And now, that's what I heard. That's what I think I heard. But let me add this too. The people that emailed us and said, "Yes, you know, I want a mandate for face coverings," I, I am not a betting woman, but I would almost bet everything I have that those people already wear face coverings. They are already out there doing the right things. It's the people that said, "No, heck no." Those are the folks that we need to be thinking about and communicating with and understanding why they're saying no and heck no, and how we can help or how we can communicate together to come to some consensus and some solution where it's just better for our community as a whole. So I will kind of stop there for, we jumped to a solution without looking at all the other possibilities and other solutions that might be there to help the town of Mooresville through this pandemic.
Yep, we're looking for options. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson and then Councilmember Ralph.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to say that I think that jumping to ask staff to write a mandate is a little bit too early. I think what we're asking of staff is for them to give us some options, options that would recommend face coverings and in what situations, options where requiring face coverings and in what situations. There is a huge range of situations, outdoor, indoor, indoor with large groups, indoor office settings. There's just a lot to consider. And to just say, you know, "Let's mandate face masks," it's too light of a discussion to just be broad with that. We need to kind of ask that they kind of give us scenarios and so we can discuss the scenarios. This again, because we're different than Raleigh, we are potentially creating a policy or an approach that is different than Raleigh, that is different than Durham, that is different than Orange. That may not be a bad thing, but if the other municipalities decide to do something similar but different, it is causing fragmentation. I am very concerned for public safety right now. I am very concerned that our numbers keep going up. We need to wear our masks today with or without a policy from the town of Mooresville. We just need to do the right thing and be respectful as best we can when we are in public spaces to social distance, to wear masks, to continue washing our hands, to try to reduce risk and spread. So I do appreciate, Mayor Colley, you bringing this up. It is very important. Now is a very critical time, but we may see the state government come in and give us more guidance that we will be able to align to that might meet the needs of this issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. Councilmember Ralph.
So for me, what I'm looking for is options at the next meeting on what a mandatory mask policy would look like and how it would be enforced. With the focus, I would like the staff to look at how the state of North Carolina defines essential businesses, because I think like Councilmember Garamella said, I think the mandatory masks make more sense in grocery stores, gas stations, places where people are going frequently and they know that they have to go and where there's lots of people gathering in indoor spaces, I think that's clearly what is going to help save lives. I also would like us to look at data of the effectiveness of wearing a mask versus not wearing a mask with those that are carrying the virus that have asymptomatic symptoms, so they don't feel like they have COVID-19, but they're carrying the virus. I've seen that data, but I think this is a data issue regarding public health. And I think we owe it to the public that we're making these decisions based on data. And so if we can find that information, I, so I'm really looking for a briefing item with options. And that briefing item would also include the educational campaign, which has been talked about, which is, you know, how could we educate and change behavior through innovative thinking of getting people to understand the importance of wearing masks, sharing that data, which I think is important of any campaign, because it also would be a marketing campaign. So those are my thoughts. And my final thought is that, in my opinion, I think, you know, Kerry's not enforcing this. this, but Mooresville is unique. Thing about Mooresville is we have a 31,000 town, people live here, 31,000, but we have many, many, lots of people coming in and out of Mooresville. So by having a mask policy, we're actually also helping save lives of those that might be coming in from Cary, carrying in from Apex, coming in from Raleigh. We are, before we became Live Connect and Live Well, the heart of the Triangle. So I think that's something also that gives us a unique opportunity to do. So that's what I'm looking for. I'll end my comments with, I'm disappointed that the towns of Wake County were put in this position. I understand that the commissioners had an opportunity to mandate this, but to me, it just seems like, I think we'll know more by the end of the week. I mean, I think if the governor does mandate it, then it might make easier for our staff to come up with a policy that aligns with what Governor Cooper wants to do with mandatory masks. But for the record, I just wish the Wake County Commissioners had made it easier because they got 13 or 12 municipalities living in Wake County. And I think it just would have been a lot easier to enforce, because now you've got basically, the decision's been thrown to us. And I'm just saying that, you know, just because I just wish it had been done by, by the board. But I guess they had their reasons of getting other municipalities, everyone on board, and they didn't believe that they could get everyone on board. So, so anyway, thank you. That's all I have.
So this was a, a lot of discussion for a roundtable. And I don't believe that staff heard that we want them to bring back just a mandated mask resolution. Please bring options. So right now, we're doing some social media outreach and education. Obviously, there's, there seems like there's a desire for more of that, at least, and then mandated mask as an option, some kind of requirement level would be helpful. Does staff need anything else in order to bring something back to us as soon as tomorrow?
No, sir. We have, we've heard your feedback then. Thank you for the clarification. I think we have found some of that same information in our research. We do definitely have some concerns in regards to enforcement and what that would look like and how practical or even possible that is. I think as a reminder of the success that we as a community, we as a county, we have a state has seen is largely through voluntary compliance. So we, we still believe that that is an avenue to success. So we would ask you, and we'll bring this back to you, to consider strongly encouraging mask use, perhaps to avoid issues or concerns with putting in place what could be looked at as a requirement or a lawful requirement that might not be enforced. That could be potentially problematic on a couple of fronts. We do agree that there are certainly opportunities for us to do more in terms of educational efforts and perhaps to assist in providing masks to those that may not have them. That is something we can look at and we'll bring you back more information on. And while we've been in here, just so that you're aware, Ariel has run a story that we do expect the governor to give an update on Wednesday as to what may occur in terms of whether we're staying in phase two, there's, you know, discussion of phase two and a half or phase three, and whether or not masks at the state level are part of that conversation. So we'll, we'll wrap all that into some options for you when we come back.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was a, a good discussion on that. And just to circle back to our town attorney, generally, anything done at the state, county or municipal level, the most strict requirement is the one that's in, in force at any time?
Yes, sir. I think that's, I had to think about that for a minute, but yes, I think that's a short way to say it, yes.
Yeah, so whatever we brought up, if the governor's was more restrictive, that would take effect, otherwise whatever we would choose to do, whether strongly encourage or whatever. Okay. Thank you very much for everyone for taking the time.
I'd like to clarify, I do not believe we can do the depth of work you've just asked us for by tomorrow. So next meeting would be July?
9th.
Okay. To cover all the things you talked about, could not be done by tomorrow's meeting?
14th, sorry, July 14th.
I would be interested in seeing if we can reduce the amount of work that we're asking of staff then, to just ask if they, if we would be willing to take a look at a required based on other communities nearby to look at tomorrow, which would be a lot less work and it would just be a starting point, because two weeks could make a difference when it comes to COVID-19.
So I would share with you, Mayor, that the, the folks that are in the area that we're aware of would be Durham County, Orange County, Knightdale, and Raleigh. As was mentioned, they all have similar language as to when they require a mask to be worn, and they all have a fairly significant bulleted list of exceptions along with theirs. We can certainly bring you back what the language is from those. I don't know if that changes the core of, of the conversation, but we can certainly share that information with you.
Okay. That would be a starting point. Thank you.
So again, I'd like to be very clear on what we've asked, because I've not heard anything taken off the list. And if we have to talk to our other staff, again, I just don't know that we can bring all of that back. So I just want to make sure we're all clear on what we're trying to accomplish. I heard different things from every one of you. It was a lengthy list.
Yep.
And I did not hear affirmation that stuff was being taken off that list. So if you could give us affirmation of that or say, no, this is the list of things you're asking us to look at.
Mayor Pretam Johnson.
So I think, to follow up with the town manager's saying, I think all seven of us had really valid, valid thoughts, input, concerns, questions. I think all of that should be taken into consideration and what we've asked of staff should all come back as one piece. I, I too don't think this is something we can handle tomorrow and make a decision on. I don't hear a lot, I don't hear any, any consistency on what we're, solution we're looking to enact immediately. I think we're, we're being very thoughtful, and I think that takes time. So I'm, I, this is not something I want to see on the agenda tomorrow night. I don't think it's anything that's, could possibly be on our agenda tomorrow night. And, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeat again, if you want to see real and meaningful change, you, you just don't do it overnight. You don't push it on people overnight. You know, Councilmember Fender gave a great example about the seatbelts. And you can go, I can go back in my lifetime and look at all kinds of smoking in, indoors and just pick an issue. They were not mandated overnight. They were, they took very, they took a great deal of thought and they, it was whoever was in charge at the time, government that was in charge or whoever proceeded with, with, with making those changes. They took great time and brought people along. I, I want, as a leader, to bring people along. I, I don't want to push this in their face. That won't work. Like I said, the people, the people that already believe it should be mandated, they're the ones already wearing masks, and they're going to wear, wear masks tomorrow and the day after that and the day after that. It, it's, it's, it's the other part of the community that we really need to be thoughtful and work with and, and, and get to a good solution with them. So that's, that's going to take time. And, and I'd like to give it the time it deserves. And, and again, this is a situation we're going to be living with for a long time. I, I, I want to make sure that what we do now, we do in the right and thoughtful manner so that people will adhere to it for the long haul. You, you hear all the time about that this is going to come back in the fall, there's going to be a second wave in the fall. I'm not sure we're out of the first wave, quite frankly. So I, I think we need to be thoughtful if we really want to make something happen. So anyhow, I, I'm, I'm fine with waiting until July. I would like though, and I thought I did hear consistency around enhancing our communication, that we can start right away. We can, we can ask our staff to, to start communicating and highlighting all the positives and highlighting the businesses that are doing the right thing and our citizens that are doing the right thing and, and, and keep that message out there that we highly recommend face coverings when six feet of social distancing is not possible and, and all the things we talked about tonight. I think the communication piece, I don't want to see that, I, I would like to see that enhanced immediately. But, thank you.
Okay. Obviously, you and I don't agree with that, the timing of that. I mean, I want to be part of a group of elected leaders who send a clear message that the health and safety of the community is the most important thing. And we can do that very clearly. Some people in the middle are not sure. And if businesses are requiring it, and they will if we mandate it, that's behavior change that we're looking for. Additionally, I want to emphasize the quickest way to speedy, robust recovery is by everyone wearing a face covering whenever they leave their homes. It's very clear. It's not confusing. You wear a face covering. Councilmember Robati, and then Councilmember Fender.
I just wanted to ask what's more of a procedural question. Do we, I, I really don't want to wait until July 14th. That's a lot of time. I wondered if we have an option to call a short meeting next week, you know, to which we all come prepared with having read and digested what staff has prepared. Maybe that's a halfway decent middle ground, you know, the second or the third maybe. If we can, I don't know if we can do that.
So, so the typical roundtable protocol is, is once it's sent to staff to follow up, staff determines how much workload is necessary, which is sort of why I asked the question, because we don't do things in a vacuum. We have to ask lots of staff. Even in our own departments, it would be influenced dramatically based on the types of programs and opportunities and interactions we have with our citizens. So that's the first thing. That, that's a process that takes time. To your second question, you can certainly call a meeting for a special purpose, and we have rules for that as well, if you did not want to wait till the next meeting. I just, I had to speak up and say, I did not think it was possible to do what council was asking us by tomorrow. It's not a statement about the issue, it's about the workload.
Yeah, no, Martha, and honestly, that's exactly the spirit in which I took it.
Thank you.
And I'm saying that if it can be done by tomorrow, I couldn't do it by tomorrow, but I'm saying that I also don't want to wait until the 14th. So is it possible that it could be done by next Wednesday and we could convene a short meeting to discuss just this issue? Everybody promises to come, having read whatever you guys give us, and then, you know, we knock it out Tuesday or Wednesday? Is that sufficient time? If it's not, just say so. I mean, you know how long it's going to take and I don't.
Brandon has been facilitating all of our COVID-related items.
So I would say there's two things to think about. One is the data, particularly as mentioned by Councilmember Ralph and, and others have certainly alluded to it. I think we can get that. I don't know what data exists specifically in regards to the impact or effectiveness of masks, but we can certainly ask that question. We have resources to find that from. The other pieces, I think, is just determining, you know, we can bring you back the options. I'm not sure that there's a lot of other information, particularly that you haven't heard tonight, that you would hear from us next week. I, I think it comes down to a question of mandating it versus strongly encouraging it. Certainly, the educational component is there regardless. I do think it's important that as we ramp up our communication efforts, if we elect to do that, that we do that knowing what message it is we're attempting to ramp up. Because there's one message there that is, we want to strongly, continue to strongly encourage doing the right thing, which really starts with social distancing. And then if you can't social distance, you should use a mask. That, that's consistent. That's almost exactly the language you'll find in each of these documents that other municipalities or counties have put out. It, you know, they all speak to requiring a face covering anytime they will be in contact with other people who are not household members in public or private, where it's not possible to maintain social distance. So that's sort of the facts of, of where we are in terms of the pandemic and how to respond to that. So we can certainly put together information to bring back to you. We can try to find the data around masks, but I, I think you have heard what those options would be coming back to you. I don't want to oversimplify it, but that's, that's the core of, of the decision you may ultimately make is, do you want to require masks? Do you want to strongly encourage masks? And behind that, we, we can certainly run with the ball in terms of ramping up education and doing other efforts, particularly at perhaps different facilities. And as we talk about reopening other facilities, there's a lot that we can do in that regard.
So I guess my question is, if those are the options, require or strongly encourage, and we're going to stay strongly encouraged no matter what in communications, I'm not sure what other information we would need staff to go find for us before making a decision, to be frank. Everyone knows it's a public health issue. It's either you require it or we're going to be strongly encouraging no matter what.
Can I please comment?
Yes, please do. Councilmember Fender.
All right, thank you. First, I thought what Brandon said he was going to do originally was fine. He said he was gonna, for tomorrow, he said he was going to go back and, you know, look at what Durham County and Orange County, Knightdale and Raleigh were going to do, what they're doing, and then present that to us tomorrow. Certainly, that, I mean, I could go do that tonight, right now. I don't, I, I don't understand why Brandon can't come back and present that tomorrow. Second, I don't think we should be asking staff to go out and look for data for us on masks. And, you know, we're, we, we're all capable of doing that ourselves. We've been bombarded with that data from the CDC and multiple news organizations. We should, we should all be able to do that research ourselves. It's, that data is out there readily available for each and every one of us, and I think it's a waste of time to make the staff go out there and do that for us. I was bulging out all the things here I wanted to say. And, and, and the other thing too, so I don't, you know, I don't think we are, well, first, I want to comment, it, it, what, what I'm hearing is that we have four council members that are in favor of mandating the mask. And I don't think anyone else, any one of us are asking to implement this tomorrow. We could certainly look at options tomorrow and do what Raleigh did and say, you know, this is going to go in effect Friday evening at 5:00. So I don't think anyone's asking us to, or we're asking people, residents, to, you know, automatically tomorrow, require masks. And then another thing I wanted to say too was, you know, it's not the people that we heard from that are strongly in favor of wearing masks that's the issue. They are going to wear the mask. It's the people that are currently not wearing the mask that we need to address. And yes, we can do that by education. And then I do think, I mean, I want to really reiterate what some people are saying is, um, what, what Mayor Colley is saying, is this, this is a timing issue. We cannot wait till July 14th to, you know, and set on our hands and do nothing until July 14th. A lot of, you know, what we do today affects the community two weeks from now. So I, I like Councilmember Robati's idea to try to do something, have a meeting sooner or come back, have some options, simple options for tomorrow. You know, I think, you know, by asking da, for data and asking for these, all these other things that we really don't need, is adding additional work to staff that we don't need to be doing.
Uh, Councilmember Ralph.
Listening to everyone has given me an idea. So I think, I don't think for me, I'm in agreement that the sooner we do this is the better, but I think we'll know more by Wednesday if the governor does, listen to me, the scenario. If Governor Cooper does announce a mandatory face requirement in our phase- does announce a mandatory face requirement in our face opening, then we would fall under that state executive order. And then, we, everyone in Morrisville would have to comply with that. And then we would still have the time to have staff look at the stuff and come back with options, and then make a decision, which could possibly be stricter than the state standard. So I think that's, you know, I totally agree with you. I don't think we just want to punt it down the road till July or, you know, end of July, if there's no option. I think we'll know more by Wednesday after the governor has his press conference about the reopening. Because I did get a couple of links that he was supposed to be, there's rumors that he's going to be talking about masks, face masks, I mean, required masks. And Secretary Cohen has been talking about this a lot on news recently. So, you know, for me, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, for essential businesses, I would vote on that, like, you know, that we need to have mask coverings and those. But I just want to make sure that we get some of this information before, so we know the options in terms of enforcement, rather than just rushing and voting for something and then say, oh, I didn't think about that. So that's sort of what I'm thinking about. So, I think we'll know more by Wednesday. And if the governor doesn't come out, then I think we need to look at.
But we're not meeting after Wednesday, we're meeting Tuesday.
Yeah. That's true.
But we could meet Thursday or Monday. Sorry, it wasn't my turn.
So, how would everyone feel about a light briefing item tomorrow with the idea that if, depending on the governor's movement, possibly meeting next week, if he doesn't implement, that would be very urgent. If he does implement, we may or may not want to go stricter. So we'd have the data in hand. The residents would have the data that we're looking at from a light briefing tomorrow without a lot of the backup. And then we'd love to have more input from them about what direction they'd like us to go, but we as leaders will make the final decision. Would that be acceptable to the group? Seeing some head nods here, but.
Could we just get the copies of the other things that were going on, rather than having the staff come up with them? Because Tom Andrew said, we're not going to have time to come up with all of this by tomorrow. So we just want to take a look at, what are you asking for?
I, I think it's generally a compilation of what the others are doing, maybe a little wrinkle that essential businesses only. I've heard that from you. Otherwise, I think everyone else is already addressing medical concerns and outdoor activities and things like that. I don't think we're missing anything. I think other people have already done a lot of due diligence. It sounds like we want someone, let's, Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Thank you. I, the only piece that I talked about that is kind of missing here is that the chamber. I'd like to, I'd like to hear from the business community if, if, if this is going to be problems, a problem for our business community, I want to help rectify whatever that problem might be. So, so I think somebody else said it earlier, if, you know, maybe we need to supply face masks. And so, anyhow, the chamber has two events coming up where their membership is going to be virtually meeting. And so I would like to make sure that this, they get to weigh in on this as well. And, and I would like the rest of the community, who now knows that it's a topic of discussion for council, to, to feel free to weigh in too, to continue to weigh in.
Most definitely. TownCouncil@TownofMorrisville.org to reach us. Councilmember Skrogan Johnson had some thoughts.
Yes, Mayor. So, a couple important points. Number one, if we're going to have a briefing item tomorrow, we need to amend the agenda, and we need to announce that we're amending the agenda. We don't have to, because we can always do that in real time. But I think this is an important topic enough that we should say the agenda's been amended, please check it out, or whatever. And the other thing is, how do we share with the rest of the town? Because only, we've only been kind of engaging with a subset of the town about this issue, or just saying that we are considering it. Because I think that the majority of folks that follow us on our social media have not been made aware that this is being considered. Because in this agenda, it says roundtable. So, you brought forward your topic, and now it's something that we want to bring to a town council meeting. So, maybe we can at least share that a little bit with our social media, so that we can equalize the town in their awareness of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that something that staff could, social media tonight, just a touch, or first thing tomorrow?
Yes, and I, I mean, we've heard that, and that, that could, could ramp up. But that could happen before tomorrow. It's the other substantive work that I think is concerned. There is not consensus by council about whether you're talking about a mandate or not. So that's still your primary part of discussion. And, and there is lots of information about enforcement that you should have before you consider that topic. What that means, how that is able to be accomplished or not. And that is the, the real fundamental issue with a mandate versus a strongly encouraging that you need to discuss.
Okay. And is that something that staff will be able to bring forth? Because, speaking to the two mayors, it's all about education.
You can educate without mandating, I think, is, is what I'm doing. Because that is the challenge they're having, is there's no enforcement. So, is the message getting across? So that's what I think we're talking about, trying to do better if we're considering this. Because that's the, that's the gap in the current ordinances, or the guidelines that are out there.
Okay. Assistant Mayor Zudma, what have you heard? And what's the plan, from the staff perspective?
So, we will bring you back tomorrow, a summary of the language that exists in the documents that are in the area, that being Durham County, Orange County, City of Raleigh, and Knightdale, so that you can look at what that is. And we will parse out from your conversation some of the different options that have been mentioned in terms of what that either enforcement, or what the recommendation might look like as to when a mask would be either required or strongly encouraged.
Okay. Is that acceptable to the group? Okay. Thank you very much. So that was one roundtable item. Lots of discussion. Thank you all for that. Who would like to do the next roundtable item?
I'll get started, because it's just something that I emailed you.
Councilmember Rao?
I'm not really asking for any, any, anything from staff. I just sent everybody a document that I want you to review on crowdfunding options for businesses. And I had, this was a result of a meeting that I had had with Commissioner Calabria and another Morrisville constituent, and Will McGuire from Crowdfund NC. And the result of that is the document that came from, came, that came to be. And Commissioner Calabria is going to be sharing this with the economic development folks at Wake County. So I just, I just want everyone to take a look at it. And after we have these roundtable items on the 25th and 30th, just want to see whether there would be an opportunity for us to maybe have a joint work session with the chamber to just talk about other options. And perhaps we could have the crowdfunding folks come and present, you know, this idea. And the idea would be that, and what's driving, what's heightened my urgency of bringing this up is that I'm very concerned that three businesses, restaurants have shut down in Morrisville already. Trevinia, Trolley, and another broken egg. And I think that it's good that the chamber's having these town hall forums. But for most businesses, what I'm hearing is, they've already indicated what they need. They need money that they're not getting because they've run out of their PPP money. They need emergency disaster relief fund, and they just need more resources. So I think that's the conversation that needs to be had. So, I just wanted to get that out there for my colleagues. I'm not asking staff or anything, but I would like head nods of, this would be something that we can talk about maybe after June 30th.
So what, what is the role of the town? There's not a financial ask. It's more of using our communications resources to amplify this message?
Yeah. I have the briefing on all my desk top, but just from my memory, yeah, that's exactly right. There's no ask of money from the town. It's just that if the commissioners would approve this program, it would be, crowdfunding would be used in conjunction with the NC CARES Act to raise money for businesses. And if they raised a certain amount, I think it's like ten, ten or fifteen thousand dollars, then under the Wake Forward program, they could get a match. They could get another ten thousand dollars.
Up to fifty thousand?
Yes. And, but this has been used in North Carolina to help, like Battery Exchange, which is a software company in Charlotte. So, private companies, particularly, the reason why, so exactly right, Mayor, there's no financial ask. But it would be, if we had a program like this, working with the chamber to make sure that we can roll it out to our community. And I think Morrisville's a good fit, because we do have a lot of technology companies and entrepreneurs here who could leverage this kind of resources. Because I'm hearing from them on the ground that they're just running out of the PPP money. And we don't know whether the Congress is going to come up with another round of PPP money. So if they don't get the PPP money, and they can't pay their people, we're going to start seeing more businesses go under in Morrisville. And I think we've got to, we've got to make sure that, I think that, I'm glad the chamber's doing their forums, but I think it's a little late. I mean, I think that in another six to eight weeks, I think you're going to see more restaurants fold in, basically.
Okay. So I support whatever we can do to help the business community. So I'm not sure what our role in this is, but I'm looking forward to the two virtual chamber events, at which time hopefully this will be discussed, and we'll see what our role could be.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that? We'll sort of see how that goes. Any comments from the virtual world there? Okay. So thank you for bringing that up, and for doing some follow-up on that. And I'll talk more about those chamber things that are meeting tomorrow and upcoming events. You can also find them online at MorrisvilleChamber.org. Any other?
I have one.
Councilmember Robati?
I have a super quick one. So on a lighter note, Kari is doing something in two weeks that I think is really cool for the class of 2020. They're soliciting pictures from parents of all the graduates. And they're gonna, because they can't obviously get together or do anything like that, they're gonna, they're going to show them as a slideshow on the side of one of the buildings. I think it's the Kari Arts Building. And their, their Parks and Rec Department is handling that. I don't, I just wondered if we could do something similar.
Because they're doing that just for Kari residents?
Just for Kari residents.
Who go to the local high schools, even the ones not in Kari.
Kari residents that go to any high school.
Any high school, right.
Right. But not Morrisville residents that go to Kari high schools, which they all do.
They all do.
Or most of them do. So, yeah, so I thought maybe we could put our seniors up on the side of a building somewhere.
Okay. That sounds like a great idea. Staff is able to come up with some creative idea to recognize the Morrisville class of 2020. Any other thoughts from other council members in support? I see a thumbs up from Councilmember Rao. Anything from the virtual group?
Except to say that it doesn't even have to be on the side of a building. We put together a film strip and ran it on the website. I mean, I think that would be great too. Like, it doesn't have to be the side of a building. That's just what they're doing. But we can do our own thing.
Okay. So, generally, we need to have at least a few, okay. Mayor Pretam Johnson?
So, and I think that's a great idea to help recognize our seniors who, some would say have been robbed this year, and others would say actually have a memorable graduation season this year. So I don't know. You gotta, I guess you gotta look at the positive. But, but I like your last thought too. Why don't we ask staff to figure out a way to help us recognize our seniors? And maybe it is just by posting, you know, send us your senior picture, and we'll repost it on social media. Maybe it's something that's simple. I don't know. Whatever, however we can help recognize them would be a nice idea.
Okay. So, it sounds like an idea that staff can look into for us, if they would. Thank you very much. Any other roundtable items from the virtual group? Anyone have anything they'd like to share or bring up? Okay. Seeing none, I believe staff has a roundtable item that may take a few minutes, and then we'll discuss plans for the rest of the evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I provided to council members, we actually have a hard copy, and we combined it to our virtual folder, and a hard copy of the grad home calendar. This is just something that tries.
Thank you. I'll, I'll start over. For council members present in the chambers, do you have a hard copy in front of you? And virtual council members should have something via email. It's a draft rolling calendar that just sort of tries to help us manage our workload and time out our items as they come through. Typically, we try to get you this before the start of a quarter. It, it's flexible. It's not a hard and fast. It's a guide document. And customarily, I usually program all the work and then share it with council. We're in a bit of a challenging situation because we missed a number of opportunities for some robust discussion topics. And, and we have those, and they continue to pile up. Our first four meetings, the two in July and two in August, are already very heavily programmed with items that are going to naturally flow through, in particular from our planning department. We've included on this an accumulated time estimate, so that you can see how long meetings are, are currently planned for with the items that are listed. It really demonstrates that we don't have capacity for some items until September. But if you flip to your last page, there are a number of items to be scheduled, and in particular, some major discussion topics that require additional time, that two things are happening. One is we have not scheduled Monday work session dates in July or August. To, that's been what we've done in the past to allow for, I'll say, a break and vacation. And some of the items are not best discussed later in the evening, especially if we would be virtual. So a couple examples of that is, we've held over requests to meet with our mess committee, and we have one pending with our MPAC committee. And Councilmember Rao has mentioned another one, which is a joint meeting with the chamber. We are continuing to try to find time to help you move through your CIP policy discussions. That will take multiple lengthy sessions. We are still working through our town center project. We have some ideas about providing department year-end reports that we've talked about periodically, that are not programmed in anywhere. The land use plan is a significant item that is going to continue to come through. So I'm, I'm seeking some guidance before I try to program items in, and how we might want to talk about managing the workload. So a couple options that might, the council might want to consider are, is you recognize that you're just not going to get to some of this stuff till September. And the work then waits for when council would begin to talk about it. And I also cannot guarantee that there won't be more items that would get added to a list like this. We could look at scheduling some evening work sessions in the summer months. Or what we've talked about some through some of the budget is brainstorming opportunities, or mini retreats, or something that could occur on a weekend. And, and there may be some other items that, that council could consider. We've sometimes met before six o'clock, but that's also problematic for people that are working and, and have other commitments. So I really just wanted to get some guidance before I continue to try to program work in with town council.
Okay. So, we, we are a little bit of the bottleneck for some decision-making. So if we're going to try to get more decisions to staff so that they can do the work, that will be up to us. So that's why we're talking about this now. Councilmember Fender?
Thank you, Mayor. My comment is that with us being virtual, I would be okay with having work sessions in July and August. I think it's a lot more palatable. having work sessions in July and August. I think it's a lot more palatable. And it's, it's a lot more doable for, for me. And I'd rather do that than get behind on, on the workload.
Are you saying that you do fully virtual meetings, so no one's in place or?
Um, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I am just saying for, you know, for us being, with us having the option to be virtual, it's not as much of a burden for me to have work sessions in addition to the normal Town Council meetings through July and August.
Okay, so you'd be willing to either evenings or weekends, just to give staff what?
I would prefer evenings.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pertem Johnson, please.
Uh, that, that's what I was just going to ask. Would, would anyone prefer like a Saturday? And the only reason I say that, you know, evenings will work too, but if, I'm looking at this list of items with the estimated timeframe and I, we never, we always double the estimates of staff. So, these, you know, you're talking almost an item, a meeting, or, you know, maybe an item and a half at every work session. So, I, I think we're talking about a couple of work sessions. And that's why I was asking, would, Saturday, you might be able to, might be able to hammer them all out or, or half of them out, but then again, that's a long Saturday. But I'm fine with doing work sessions during the summer, however that, they may fit in everyone's schedule.
So, evenings or weekends are both acceptable to you, Mayor Pertem?
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Skargunis Johnson, please.
So, I am concerned about the amount of work and trying to get through that. And if we don't do something to kind of lessen the agendas, we cannot add anything until September or October. I'm not a fan of adding something to our weekends. I know that we probably can crank it out, but sometimes when we schedule time on the weekends, we're not as efficient as we might be in the evenings. But if we want to add a working agenda-based meeting virtually, all virtually I like because we're all equal, to have some thoughtful discussions, I think that's good. The hybrid meetings are working. I, I think they are working. But I do think that when you have a completely virtual meeting, it does work really well for some of our discussions. I've seen us do great work on the budget when all of us were all virtual. And I think that some of these items, we could do the same because it's a similar kind of approach.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rao?
Yeah, I'm fine with the evenings. I mean, I think, well, a lot of us are still working, but even during the day for me, because of virtual meetings, maybe even earlier, just because we're, we're at home. Some of us are working from home. So, but, you know, I think the more we can flush out some of these items during the summer, the more of the body of work we can vent. Of course, if we had it at seven in the morning, you know, it'd be great, just to.
Okay, remote member, Councilmember Garamella, please.
Um, I cannot do weekends because I have a class on Saturday and Sunday till September end that goes till one in the afternoon. So, that's my problem. And then also weekdays, you know, till five thirty-six, I cannot.
So, evenings and weekend afternoons are not an option for you, sir?
If you want to do my groceries, you know, but after four, or like three, I don't know, like, I don't want to basically block everyone, but weekends after three o'clock, I can.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you for your flexibility on that. Councilmember Rabadi?
I'm fine with either. I basically have no life.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you very much for that. Yes, I'd be amenable to any of these hybrid or virtual during the day, weekends or evenings. So, staff, hopefully, that gives you something to work with?
Yes, sir. May I get one clarification?
Please.
Um, if, if, I think I may have heard from Councilmember Garamella, did you open up the option of something beginning at three o'clock?
On a weekday?
Yeah.
On an af, on a weekday afternoon?
No, 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 a weekend.
Okay, so three, and I would tell you, starting a retreat at three o'clock on Saturday would not be a productive meeting. That would not be a productive meeting.
What about a Sunday?
Not if you're starting in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It is seven thirty-six. We were originally hoping to just have a two-hour meeting. At this time, the next item, now that we're all done with roundtable, is CIP discussion. If that's something that Ms. Hooks can get us reintroduced to and perhaps we can do some more tomorrow night, would that be acceptable to the group to go to eight? Is anyone willing to stay a little bit later to have some discussion after that or should we just timestamp it at eight? Any comment? Okay, no comments from anyone. Let's see how it goes with, uh, remote member, Mayor Pertem Johnson, please.
Hi, uh, timestamp it at eight. I think we all kind of came into this meeting agreeing it would, I think we did anyhow, that's two hours. So, I think we, we keep to the eight o'clock. But I, I don't know, and this is a Jeannie question, why, is, if, I'm not sure why she should start tonight and why don't we all do it at the same time when we're going to hash out CIP? And if that's tomorrow, that's fine, but it, it looks like CIP is also on the list that we just talked about. We just talked about having some workshops in the summer and CIP is on that list. So, I guess what I'm saying is, why do we, do we need to talk about CIP today and tomorrow or do we need to leave it and have a really thorough and robust discussion when we have it as a workshop issue during the summer?
Yeah, the only thing, is my name, Mayor?
Yeah, I was just going to respond to that, that if we're short on time, any time that we can move the work forward is good time to use. And today and tomorrow are close enough together that if she gives us a real refresh now, we can actually go right into discussion tomorrow, would be my thought.
Yeah, my, my, my concern is we're not going to finish it tomorrow. So, we're going to bring it up again sometime at a workshop in the summer and why don't we keep that conversation together? Because what will happen is she'll, she'll have to do a recap again in the summer. I, and now we're, we're, we're redoing work. I don't want to redo work. So, that's a question for Jeannie to respond to.
And let me, let me, let me start.
You want to start?
Let me start. Is, is what Jeannie could do for the next ten or fifteen minutes is just, again, refresh the presentation and the context of how she put it together and what's in there. Council spent some substantive time on one of the, you've got five distinct policy areas that you're going to end up having to cover. You started talking about land acquisition and gave her some guidance and feedback that, that potentially that would be the first one, that was some facilitated questions. You, you sort of directed staff to go back and take your input and craft some kind of policy document for you to look at. So, she would, she could do some facilitated questions perhaps tomorrow and we could work on that one. Then, as you look at your future CIP, your next topic that was prioritized was Town Center. And the mayor and I had a brief conversation about this today. This is not just your DFI demonstration project. This is your whole vision of a Town Center that she could walk through with you. But you're going to take that CIP in clusters of meetings in order to talk about specific topics that then staff will go off and do some work and come back. So, that's what Jeannie could offer to council this evening is just, here's what we want you to look at in preparation. Now, I'll turn it over to Jeannie.
So, so I can basically tee it up for you tonight for tomorrow night. I can explain to you what you have in front of you. I can urge you to actually go home and look at it and be prepared for it tomorrow. And I can tell you which one you really need to be looking at and then what staff can, can take away as next steps in, in looking ahead. So, if council's okay, I'm, I'm glad to do that for you the next ten minutes.
Okay, that sounds great. I do have a remote participant, Councilmember Garamella. He wanted to make a comment before that. Councilmember Garamella, did you have a thought?
No, I think it was the previous one.
It was previous. Okay, I apologize. So, yeah, Ms. Hooks, please go ahead and tee it up and, uh, so we can be better prepared for tomorrow. Appreciate it.
All right, so what I have in front of you is, is generally the information that we used at retreat. So, I want you to dial back to retreat and think about the work you actually accomplished during that session. We got halfway through it. So, so let's, let's look at this information real quick. So, you established your CIP placeholders with the budget in 2020 and you actually established these thinking about the prioritization based on your common interest. We, we used a paired comparison tool, several paired comparison tools that allowed us to glean individually information that was important. And what we did is we synthesized that information to be able to figure out, what did you want to talk about first and why? That was very important to put those, those five categories in order. They were land acquisition, Town Center, Greenway, transit-oriented development, and affordable housing. We considered, in your language, in the, in the information you gave us, land acquisition and Town Center policies were the first that you directed us to tackle. And the reason why that's really important is land acquisition policy you said to us touches Town Center, Greenways, TOD, and affordable housing in various ways. So, it became the critical nexus of what you needed to focus on first. And you, moreover, you said that land is, is a valuable commodity in Morrisville, meaning there's not much vacant land left for us to grab a hold of. And the cost of it is just escalating. So, therefore, those became the critical nexus items, land acquisition and Town Center, because you already committed and obligated yourself to, to that vision in so many ways over the years that it became the next critically important item to discuss. And then from there, you said Greenways, and then you decided that transit-oriented development and affordable housing, because more discussion needed to happen on those, those were more long-term perspectives. Again, your input that we've carried forward. So, in tackling the top priorities at retreat, dialing you back just a little bit, we as staff walked you through how to make a policy. And, and you, you began defining what I consider core policy elements, the purpose, the priorities of something, the process in which it's going to occur, funding mechanisms, and, and how are you going to maintain it? And, and you tackled your first one, land acquisition, and you walked through these core questions and you started to craft, what does that look like? What does each one of those statements look like? So, what I've done for you to refresh your memory, as staff put some words in front of you, bulleted high-level words that help us craft what is a purpose statement in a policy, you said these were extra important things that we needed to add. Not only did you agree with what was there, you said strategic and future public purpose was an important statement. You said proactive support of strategic goals was important. And then further approved capital investment planning, meaning look beyond just your five years. So, the yellow highlighted items are the things that you directed us at retreat to put in that you thought were important words for staff to consider as we take this feedback back and actually now work and prepare a policy to bring back in front and put in front of you for you to react to. So, that's the state that I feel like, staff feels like, you've given us that information from a treat. Now that we are, we are moving past budget and setting up for a new fiscal year, staff has some time that we can now dedicate, pick this feedback up, craft a policy for you for land acquisition. I've done some research on it before retreat. I'll pick that up and, and put something in front of you, hopefully, August time period at the, at the latest. So, without rehashing and going back and redoing this, this critical work that you all committed to at retreat, my, my suggestion to you is to allow staff to do that, to bring that policy back forward. So, I'm going to pause right there before I go to Town Center. Is that amenable to council to allow staff to do that for land acquisition?
Yeah, what, do you need any more input from us or you have everything that you need from the retreat?
I feel like the input and the minutes and the information that you shared with us as you looked at these core elements that are critical to crafting a good policy is enough for staff to create a, a policy to put in front of you. And that, it will be important for you as council to now have something substantive with words and context and meaning that you can now react to and carry the next step.
Okay, then after we approve that, we can start acquiring land?
Right.
I think we're ready. Remote participant, Mayor Pertem Johnson, please.
I was just going to say, go, go for it, Jeannie. That sounds like a plan, a great plan.
I'm writing that down. Go for it. It's my direction. The land acquisitions, acquisitions probably a little bit more easier than Town Center, Town Center items. Let me look at that one. And I'm going to tee this up for tomorrow night. So, again, if I've used at retreat, this act, this activity that you did as council, where you walked through these core elemental questions of creating a good policy, this would be the same thing that I would walk you through, the same process that I would walk you through with Town Center. Town Center's a little bit bigger though, so you're going to have to step back. You're going to have to approach it at a very high level and it needs to be visionary. But it will help you, crafting a Town Center policy will help you guide your next conversations that, that you really had at retreat in developing an RFP. You've actually given a great deal, I think, as a staff person, a great deal of information and input on Town Center. It's we need to help you bring it together. And I think a policy statement helps do that for council and helps give guidance to staff, especially when they're trying to pull an RFP together and work with a public-private partnership development. So, the same core questions would be what I would go through with council for tomorrow for Town Center. And I, what I've given you tonight, you can look at. Staff has already prepared what we think we've already heard you say through your paired comparison tools and your input. These are your words that I've synthesized and put together where I think fits at a purpose statement that you can react to. And tomorrow, give some additional feedback as we did at retreat for land acquisition. And we can add to or take away or expand. Does that make sense?
So, the purpose is one of the elements.
Purpose, short-term and long-term objectives, framework of how to execute, plan to fund. And, and that's primarily where Town Center would probably land. You would in the future, once you have a Town Center, carry it a step further and have some maintenance elements to a policy. And I think something I'll remind you that we said as staff at retreat is let us get you somewhere with a policy. Let's have this discussion. Let's build a policy together. Let's, let's get a starting place. And you can always come back and mature a policy, as you do always. You revisit budget every year. That's a policy. And you mature that policy and you add to it, you take away, you build upon it based on what your needs are at the time. So, that's me teeing it up. Hopefully, that's clear to council where I think we might have a conversation tomorrow. Hopefully, that's clear to council where I think we might have a conversation tomorrow. At least a starting place.
So, looking at the sheet you just went through, you looked at town center purpose, and then, should we think of these as questions, or we're choosing out of these groupings? This is what you've already heard, so what is it, how do you see tomorrow going?
So, I would consider that a fair question. I would approach the question, what is the purpose, first. I would consider that the items that I've listed there are your words that you shared with us as a place to start, and ask yourself, is something missing?
Okay.
Is another core word or buzzword important to add to let staff know this is meaningful, and it needs to be considered as we start crafting a purpose statement for a policy? That's an example. Does that help clarify?
Yeah. And, so the next one, the framework to execute, RFP process.
And, Mayor, if I could just...
I don't want to get into weeds here.
What Jeannie has put in the presentation is your individual input. It is not something that you, as a collective body, have said, yes, this is it.
That's fair.
So, that's the purpose of the discussion and understanding what values more or less, and making sure you understand what we've regurgitated here is individual until you...
Validate.
Affirm it.
And, it would be real easy to say, all of it. And, you won't accomplish your goal if you don't make strategic choices and decisions and provide us guidance by just saying, yes, do it all.
Okay, so to that end, it would be helpful to know if there's either ors in here? If we do have to make choices...
You tell us that, and it guides your policy.
Right. So, these were like RFP process, site control needs. These were your words that were common, meaning there was a common thread amongst what I may have heard from Mayor Colley versus councilmember Ral versus Mayor Protem Johnson. There were strings of common threads, and these are the words that probably reoccurred more often than not. So, it's more of that validation of, and consensus, is this really representative of what entity as a whole might want to tell staff as we craft, what is the framework to execute in a policy, that core element?
Okay. Remote member, Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
So, Jeannie, you're going to, tomorrow, we should come prepared to go back over these questions. How many were there for them, these four slides? And, that's where you want the conversation tomorrow night?
Yes, ma'am. So, I've crafted what I think are the key elements to focus on for town center are the questions of what is the purpose? What are the short-term and long-term objectives? And, you notice here, I've not defined any of these as short-term or long-term, and that might be a discussion you want to have. What is the framework to execute? Have we included everything you want us to consider as we think about how to execute a town center as a whole vision? And then, how do you plan to fund? There has to be a mechanism to be able to realize and bring to fruition this policy vision that you are crafting.
So, hopefully tomorrow night, we'll come to consensus on these four questions so that you can then take it away and do the same thing, come up with a policy, and we move forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that sounds like a good plan.
Councilmember Ral?
Thank you, sorry. Are we going to be able to eventually meet with DFI again? And, I mean, I'm fine with coming up with some of these policies, but I would be very curious to know how the environment's changed in this economy with developers and the kind of investment they're making, because that isn't even part of this list. What's going to happen with office space? What deals are developers doing right now? Don't mean to be negative, but I think the entire context of this town center has not changed in where we are as a town.
So, in our news and notes, we have, we have shared virtually exactly that, that we have held off bringing back an RFP for you as DFI is evaluating that climate and evaluating models. And, it is part of your calendar here. You haven't sort of seen where we plugged it in. Some of those things are still very uncertain.
Yeah, okay.
But, yes, that, but again, that's why the town center is not just about that DFI demonstration. And, any economist or analyst now is working on uncertain information, including DFI.
I have to reaffirm our vision, what we would like it to be, and then we'll see if the reality can make it happen.
Yeah, I didn't mean negative, I just...
No, that wasn't negative, that was just a question. Any remote participants have any questions about what we're going to be doing tomorrow? Okay, great, good meeting. Thank you very much. Ms. Hooks, thanks for teeing it up for tomorrow, that was very helpful. And, I'm very glad to hear that you have everything that you need to go forward with the land acquisition policy, as you noted. There is some urgency around that item. At this time, does staff have anything they'd like to share at this time? Okay, so I would enter...
Yes.
Please.
Let's all wish councilmember Fender a happy birthday.
Can we sing?
Happy birthday to you.
To you.
Happy birthday to you.
You should have told me I was full of...
Happy birthday to you.
So, councilmember Fender...
I'm sorry, I subjected you to that.
Can you pull out that big cockatank now?
Councilmember Fender would like to make a motion for us to adjourn, so you can start your birthday celebration.
Yes, I'd like to make an emotion for the council to adjourn.
I have a motion from councilmember Fender. Do I have a second? I have a second from councilmember Robati. Eric's, town clerk Eric Smith will do a roll call vote on the adjournment motion.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Ral?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Skraggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to adjourn passes unanimously.
It is 7:58, we are adjourned. Thank you all.